There you go.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I'll talk to you later, we'll get some direction worked out again.
Call me later, have a chat.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, bye.
Yep, bye.
Okay, we ready?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that, everybody.
Public hearing of the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one.
Okay. There is ordinance. And due to the fact that everybody's not here, then we'll not vote on that, we'll have to wait, so we can't suspend the rules or anything.
Correct. So is there any use to read it?
Yes, yeah, we have to have first reading.
Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one, an ordinance amending the capacity fee to be collected by the town of Thorntown, Indiana, from the customers served by the waterworks system. Whereas the town of Thorntown, Boone County, Indiana, the town owns and operates a waterworks utility for the benefit of the rate players within the town and in the surrounding areas. And whereas pursuant to Indiana law, rates and charges of the Thorntown Municipal Waterworks Utility are subject to the approval of the town council by ordinance. And whereas the town previously adopted certain rates and charges relating to the waterworks utility of the town through various ordinances, including ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine. And whereas the connection of additional expansion of existing properties connected to the waterworks utilities requires the town to allocate capacity in its system to order, in order to provide safe and efficient water surface, water service. And whereas the town desires to continue to plan and prepare for new development in or anticipated to be in the town. And whereas the town desires to lessen the burden on existing customers of paying for infrastructure that is needed to make waterworks service available for new or expanded development. And whereas the town engaged O.W. Cronin Associates, certified public accountants and financial advisors to the town to determine just and equitable capacity charges for new or expanding connections to the town waterworks. And whereas the town desires to adopt, adopt an amended water capacity fee consistent with the L.W. Cronin Associates' report and reviews. And whereas the town has caused notice of a public hearing on the rates and charges set forth herein to be duly advertised, posted and mailed, and has held a public hearing thereon, at which time all users of the waterworks, owners of property served or to be served by the waterworks, and other interested persons were heard concerning the proposed rates and charges all pursuant to Indiana law. And whereas any existing rates and charges set forth in prior ordinances relating to the town's waterworks will remain in full force and effect unless otherwise superseded by the charges set forth herein. Now therefore, be it ordained by the town council of the town of Thorntown, Indiana, that, section one, the town hereby adopts a Thorntown Municipal Water Capacity Fee as prepared by O.W. Cronin Associates. The water capacity fee reflects the cost of the capacity in the town's waterworks facility, which must be permanently allocated to real estate requiring new or expanded water service. The capacity fee for each equivalent dwelling unit, EDU, or single residential unit requiring service from the Thorntown Municipal Waterworks shall be four thousand dollars. Such fee shall apply to each new customer connecting to the town's water system to or to an existing customer that is expanding its current use. The capacity fee will be determined on the basis of the total number of EDUs with a residential unit considered one EDU. All other parcels of land not used for residential dwelling units shall be converted to EDUs on the basis of anticipated water usage from such real estate as compared to the anticipated water for residential dwelling units. On calculations of EDUs resolved in a fraction, the result will be rounded up to the next whole number. For example, an EDU calculated at three point three for a property will be rounded up to four EDUs for purposes of calculating the capacity fee for such property. For no reason shall any structure connected to the system, including but not limited to mobile homes, apartments and condominiums, be treated as less than one EDU for purposes of any of the town's rates and charges. Section two, all parts of other ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby superseded to the extent inconsistent herewith. Section three, the provisions, rates and charges of this ordinance are severable in the event any one or more of the provision contained in this ordinance should be invalid or unenforceable in any respect. The validity, legality and enforceability of the remaining provisions contained herein and/or the prior ordinances of the town shall not in any way be affected or impaired and shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. One more now.
And just see if there's any questions from public.
Any comments from you guys? Gary.
I need to make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing at seven nineteen P.M.
Second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Presentations, we don't.
Jessica is going to do a little presentation about the EDC.
Are you all over me? I think I'm figuring out the agenda. Well, good evening, gentlemen, I'm Jessica, I'm our VP of Economic Development with the EDC. And did you get a chance to share the slideshow?
I emailed it to them.
Okay, so hopefully you guys got a chance to kind of get an overviewing gist of everything that we do. I would say that a lot of our focuses have been in the bigger communities. I am about nine months in at this point. Believe it or not, would love to have more conversations around what Thorntown is wanting to accomplish from a development standpoint, a responsible development standpoint. Because I think we're at a good point here, water's coming towards the lead district twenty twenty-six. And we've got some time here to decide what makes sense here in Thorntown. And begin coming alongside you and taking baby steps to, to make this I don't know, friendly for development, but also in a way that, that makes sense for the community as well. I do my very best to get around to all of our businesses in the county each year. That includes your small businesses here in Thorntown. And so it gives me an opportunity to understand how things are going, what challenges are there. If there's companies looking to expand or have another location, we certainly facilitate that process as well. We've been facilitating the one eighty makeover grant and the one eighty in color. And here was, the one eighty makeover was Oddfellows with new windows. New windows, what else? That was pre-me, I think just windows.
Yeah, with the original, but then there's additional money that I think he might be getting, is that, is that settled yet?
It's not settled yet.
Okay.
But you mentioned it already.
Yes, I believe we did.
Okay, so there were dollars that were allocated for the Pizza King here in Thorntown that were not needed, about twenty-five grand worth. And so there is conversation happening at the state level to get this approved, to be able to reallocate those dollars over to the Oddfellows water sprinkler, fire retardant system. That will be going in, and then we also have the one eighty in color grant, which will be a writing mural on the Oddfellows building as well. I have also put a couple that is interested in doing an Artesian brewery and distillery in front of Braden for his building, one of his buildings, and in conversation for potentially having a brewery or distillery here in town. So we're happy to be your partner, we're happy to do more. And we're thankful for every year getting to come alongside you for whatever that continues to look like.
So Jessica has also reached out to me with a grant opportunity that I sent on to Sir Bobby. Twenty-five thousand max. I don't expect that we would get that much because with all the reading that she sent me, it didn't sound like anybody had ever gotten a total of twenty-five thousand. But that grant opportunity would be for doing a public restroom at the Lions Park. So about something we're working on. She also has reached out to me earlier today, actually. We're going to have a sit down and see if we can talk a little bit more about the different things that the park board has planned for happenings up there, the idea that it's on the trail, et cetera, et cetera, the KOF doing their barbecues and whatever, and see if she can hook us up with some people that could help us with putting in that public facility up there. We talked about that facility earlier. We do not believe there are any security lights up there. The fence is in poor repair. So.
There are no security lights up there, for sure.
Where at?
At the Lions Park.
Oh, yeah, what did you say, the fence?
Yeah, there's a wooden fence and it's not in very good shape, so last week Ben did go get a new doorknob and put on that little storage shed that's on the end of the building, because we have no idea who all had keys to that, so we put a new doorknob on it. He put a new lock on the caboose. He said the caboose is not in very good shape. And in fact, when the insurance agent came over and looked at the caboose, they basically are not even listing it for insurance on our policy because it's still bad. So, things we need to look at. There was something else on, oh, Lisa Galvin is a Boone EDC board member. She and I are meeting Friday morning to talk about different things going on here in Thorntown and the Boone EDC. They want to know what else can they do to be helping us with this growth going forward. Jessica also had sent me some specs. Uh, what was it, probably either early January, maybe even back in December. I can't remember exactly all those specs and what kind of a business we were looking at.
Well, they needed an acreage, it was a, it was a truck repair facility, and so as I have opportunities that come across our desk, and I think that they could possibly be a fit for Thorntown.
And so I ended up and forwarded that on to Dustin Diperson. Put him in contact then with Jessica and whatever comes of that, I have no idea at this point, so.
It's also a really good tracking way to track what, what the interest is as you as counselors make decisions for what this looks like in the future, what about Thorntown, what about surrounding areas, population booms. It helps us as your economic development arm get an understanding for what are the opportunities, and it allows you guys to make the best decisions to understand what kinds of opportunities are you getting, what makes sense here, et cetera. So even if it's not now, doesn't mean that we can't work on it for the future.
And Tracy, pronounced her last name, Forman Crocker. She is currently the interim director sitting in since Molly has left, and she and I have already had telephone conversation, we had a little meeting one day. And, you know, she also was asking what as Boone County EDC can we do for Thorntown? So that's where we are, we're looking for different things we need to, you know, if there's a particular type of business or something that we're interested in coming here, we just need to let them know.
How long has that twenty-five thousand dollar grant been available for small towns? Do you know?
It's an AARP grant, so it's nothing that we have detailed knowledge of.
What's been your experience on it, but why you don't get the whole thing?
Never applied for one before.
So we don't know?
We don't know. Try it and find out.
I can do some research on it, too.
Do what?
I, I, I'm gonna, I can do some research on it, too, I have all the information, I was gonna work on it this week, I just was doing all my meetings for the other stuff on your guys' desk.
It would be nice if the whole, I mean, if it was, well, if we could get the whole thing, because I think, I think just looking at what it would take to do what we want to do, which is put two restrooms, a male and female restroom in down there, is probably going to eat up the twenty-five thousand, I mean, not that we couldn't put our money in it too, but if we don't have to, it'd be better.
I, I'm so sorry.
Go for it.
I was going to say, I did speak to Braden, it sounds like you know Braden.
I do.
And when we opened the bidding process for that, he said that we need to be sure to let him know, but it sounds like he is willing to do it at cost for materials, which would be amazing, and which means that that grant, if we can get that, that amount, or even anywhere near it, that's going to be a lot less than having to have a developer come in, paying time, labor, cost, all of those things, so I do think that.
I imagine we're gonna have to have an architect anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, that's probably gonna be a state hall, which is ridiculous, but that's what we'll have to do.
And we still need to assess for water over there, and where the access is from that. Another thing is, is down the road, I mean, we need to keep looking for grants from you guys, because the other thing is, like we were discussing earlier, the electrical in that building itself is extremely shoddy. It was done a long time ago by members from the Lions when that was first erected. We can't, so the issue with the security light, and I was explaining this today. So there's two sides. In the pavilion, you have far side and the side closest to the storage shed. In the storage shed is the breaker box. In order to get electric from the outlets up top on either side, you have to actually have the lights in the facility on for the electrical sockets to work. So we need to look at the electrical in that building and be sure that, one, it's up to code, because that is a huge concern of how long ago that building was built. And two, before we put any sort of security light in, we need to ensure that we're not going to mess anything up that could become dangerous, I mean, that's kind of where we're at with that. But at the very least, I think utilizing that grant or applying for it, you know, if we can get the maximum amount, great, and I will do some research to see if I can find some information on why maybe that wasn't granted the max allowable.
I've had a lot of experience in Morgan County with parks and grant funding, I'm happy to come alongside you guys. Sir Bobby was kind enough to give me the folder of her information, so she just handed that to me, I'll review it. I also sent an email to Corinne this morning with a few different funding opportunities, my board of which will be one of them, I'll respond to your email, just didn't get a chance. And so DNR does grants. You could even look at perhaps a sponsorship, whether it's Lily or other businesses that have interest in Thorntown and being a part of giving back to the community and have a heart for a smaller community. There's lots of opportunities, and so we'll pursue them, we'll see what happens. But more than happy to help guide you from a grant standpoint, so we can get the max out of it.
If it's possible, I would like to get ahold of you later this week and maybe we can set up a meeting time that works for you, so we can kind of go along with that in detail.
Yeah, yeah.
I gave her.
I gave her my email.
Oh, you gave her.
I made friends, perfect, yeah. So, so the reason I'm here tonight was wanted to provide you with a recap, both of last year, who we are, what we do, why it matters. And then also our contract is up for renewal, so I'm here for the vote.
Good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
One more thing that is happening out there, and Jessica might be able to help fill me in some blank spaces for me. Jennifer Rubenstein, we, we also, because of meetings that I attend with the Boone EDC, Jennifer and I had talked about the acquisition of the Lions Park. And she has written an article about us getting that park, having it donated to us. And she has some kind of newsletter that she sends out to Boone EDC investors. So who all gets that? I don't know, tons and tons of people. And exactly when that article, I don't know if it's already gone out or if it goes out soon. But anyway, there's lots of, lots of people out there that are hearing the name of Thorntown and, you know, who knows what that might bring to us in the future.
Jessica, you say that somebody's definitely interested in working with what's his name over there?
Braden.
Yeah, Braden for maybe moving in here with the business?
Maybe. They are also looking at Lebanon, they are also looking at Seinesville.
The, well, he had somebody originally that decided to go to Nashville, I believe.
I think you're right.
And so they, they are not available, but I don't know how well they're gonna do at Nashville with our truth down there, but that's to be seen, but I didn't know whether it was a, really a close win for us, or it's just a toss-up.
I, I would not call it a, I wouldn't call it either. I didn't have strong feelings one way or the other with it, they were working with a contractor for the old Lido building on the square in Lebanon. Old building needed a lot of repairs. Issues with the contractor, they reached out to us and said, are there other options in the county? And Braden had already put the bug in my ear of, if there's an opportunity, I'd like to have it, and that's how that connection came about. Seinesville had a old mill that came available. The couple that is wanting to do this and go into business is in process of a divorce. But they're going into business together as a restaurant. So it would be my experience with divorces that, since that stuff takes time, that a business would also take time. So if indeed they did choose Thorntown, and, and knowing that there will be success in growing populations in the future, twenty-six and beyond, this would not be a fast win.
Good.
But timeline, probably the red timeline.
I think it's the right, it's always the right time to have conversations.
But the building, it would be over here.
Right.
And that building's not going to be ready for several months.
Right, right.
Which building?
Oddfellows.
Well, he's got the other building, it's, he's got the other building that's closer to being ready.
The last conversation I had with him, he is in discussion with someone for a possibility of a coffee shop.
Okay.
Now, one thirteen is already rented downstairs.
Mm-hmm. I just met her today, and she was talking about doing, she does like markets and like a boutique style similar to, yeah.
Good.
Jennifer had done, so Jennifer is our VP of Marketing and Communications with the EDC, so when you hear Jennifer, that's who we're talking about, also another redhead. Braden, Braden, yeah, team redhead. Braden had asked Jennifer to do a, just like we had done the article with the park here recently. He, Jennifer had done a highlight for the, is it one or two of his apartments?
There's two of them.
I was gonna say, and because of it, they're rented.
I say, I know one of them, they moved in before Christmas Eve.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we did this probably Halloween timeframe.
Those two of them, like he gave me a tour of the facility because I was, I, I would like to open a coffee shop here in town.
I think both of, I think both of them are rented, aren't they?
Yeah.
The apartments?
Yes.
They were the last I knew.
Yeah, I think they're both rented.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we brought, we brought that business to Thorntown for them to be rented.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, you're the, you're the public here. Do you have any comments? You want to make a comment, you want to come up with something, you want to say something?
Well, sure. Question, the, at the Lions Park, you're talking about the fence, does that fence belong to the Lions Park or to the town, or does that belong to Stuckey?
It would belong, well, okay, did you know the Lions Park now belongs to the town?
Yes.
Okay, so now, it's, it's now the town.
Correct, but is that part of Stuckey's?
No, it's part of their parking space.
Because it's on the east side of the shelter.
Oh, okay, that fence, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Too bad. Because if not, we could say, hey, John, help us out. Yeah.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Gary. Department reports, only thing we have is park board, and you got five minutes or less.
We will have votes to approve our contract first.
That's not on here at this particular time. But we can do that, if you want to do that.
Yeah, we can do it, it's down underneath business, but we can bring it up if you want to.
Okay, which one is that? C, the EDC contract, C.
I'm so sorry, I thought we weren't, had me on the agenda and that was my agenda item.
Oh, sorry.
Well, that's okay.
Sometimes the way I type things and do it. Okay, so and their contract, same, it's the same contract as always, just a different year. And it's, it's a thousand dollars that we have been doing.
Okay. All right, well, Bruce, I know you're aware of it. Are you aware of the, we have a contractor, have been having a contract with the Boone County EDC to?
I am not.
Okay, so anyway, that's, it's come up to be due for twenty twenty-five if we, as a council, decide to go ahead with it. Personally, I think it's a good deal, and they have helped us out. So we need to make a motion to continue on and give them a thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Boone County EDC contract for twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You got your thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir, thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
See ya. And then I think that requires, I think everybody's signature. I'll maybe just. Maybe it's just one.
Just yours.
Where is it?
Let me see where they go.
I don't think it's got one on there. There's theirs. And there's.
Usually.
There's yours. And there, unless it's before that.
Okay, well, that's, go ahead and sign it there. And then I'll I'll put my signature on there, too. I, I attend a lot of different meetings with the Boone EDC and have had for a while, okay.
Okay. Okay, we need to approve the minutes of January twenty-third.
Go back to the park.
Go back to, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I was getting the head over here.
Okay, all right, five minutes or less, I'm gonna make this fast. So I met with the health department in Lebanon, I also met with part of Lebanon. And we spoke with town insurer, Kara Schefer, I believe is her name.
Kara.
And then we spoke.
And then um, we spoke with Amy Newman. Amy has approved a contract for our vendors. There is no overhead cost for filing with Boone County Health Department for the farmer's market and the park. And after speaking with the Town Insure, we are now um aware of exactly how to make sure that all liability is covered when it comes to vendors, so that the town cannot come under fire for any damages, injuries that is outlined in the contract that is in that lovely folder when you guys have time, if you wanna go through it. Um, movies in the park, we have started typing up the sponsorship letter. I have a meeting tomorrow at the Eagles Auxiliary Meeting in Lebanon. Um, as one of our potential sponsors to help offset the cost of permits for the movies in the park. We are looking for four sponsors, four hundred dollars per permit. We're doing four movies, cause we're only doing them once a month. Um, the other major thing on here that the board has voted, voted on, can't speak, is that um, we are going to be looking into applying to Boone County Chamber of Commerce um to kind of expand our connections with grants and grant opportunities with people such as EDC, Eli Lilly, other programs that may have funding available that can assist us and support in applying for those things. Um, learning as much as we can to be as effective as we can. We have been invited by Discover Boone County to the Boone County State Tourism Meeting. Corinne and I have discussed this. Um, we will be attending that as well as an event organizer meeting. And there's Indiana Farmer's Market Forum that we will also be attending, that is put on by the top farmer's markets voted in Indiana. Um, and they will be giving us a lot of great information to make sure that we are successful and we look out for our towns' interests. Other than that, um, I have to look into that grant, that is the next thing that was on my list. I was trying to get prepared about the farmer's market to address all of that with you guys today, since that was a concern last time. We do have a young woman who owns a studio in Lebanon called Sage Yoga. She does yoga in the park in Lebanon and she has reached out to us to see if it's something that we would be interested in in the summertime. And that is something that the board has been discussing. Um, we do have one question for you guys. Shalom House usually does sack lunches every Monday during summer break at the Lions Park. Is that something that we want to continue doing?
Is it at the Lions Park or is it at the library?
It's only at the library in the winter time. In the summer time, they do it at the Lions Park. I did not see an issue with it, but I felt that that was something we needed to run by you guys to make sure it's okay that that continues. Um, they provide low costs or they provide free lunches to low-income families during summer months, so.
How many families do we have, you know?
I don't, I'm not, I've never met with Shalom House. Um, I have no affiliation with them. Marilyn Sheets, she's our employee that does the bathrooms up here at the park. She is affiliated with them and she had inquired about whether or not we would continue to allow them to use the park those Mondays from eleven to twelve thirty to pass out those meals to those families.
Cliff and Nancy Beasley are very involved with that as well.
I don't have a problem with it. You guys got a problem?
No.
I agree, you should stay.
I mean, I think that it's beneficial to the community, so. Um, Corinne, did you email the, them the information on the circus that you forwarded to me or no?
No, just you.
There was a circus that reached out to us. Um, it's called Cold Pepper and Merryweather. I guess they actually came here, according to Marilyn, and it's like ten to twelve years ago.
And Frank emailed it to us.
Okay.
Oh, he got it too?
I, yeah, I saw it as in the forwarding.
I think Frank emailed it to all of us. Pretty sure.
So I did speak with Kara about it to make sure with the insurance that if that was something that we chose to move forward with, that we were going above board here and making sure. Um, and she did say that we would be covered. We need to make sure that we would get um a certificate of liability from their insurance. Um, but from everything she saw, she thought it was good. It was something that was really popular when it did come here about a decade ago. And it is something that we've heard interest in. I would like to pursue it and look into it, and the board has agreed on that. But I still want to take into account you guys' opinion before we start doing that. They require that we reach out to them as soon as possible because they have to start planning and providing all of that information well in advance.
I thought, I thought Frank had a problem with that the last time. That's been, I mean, I wasn't, this was before we were on the board, but I, I, wasn't there a problem down there?
Some, the, the, one of the, the fence got messed up, one of the fences or something. Um, I didn't remember that, but not, other than that, no. There was some damage done to one of the, I'm not sure what's, fence around the baseball diamond or something.
Well, I do know Marilyn said that there were some issues last time because there was a Little League game going on during their circus performances. And it was causing a disruption for the Little League. So I do know that if it's, if it is done this year, we need to ensure that we have a Little League schedule. I still, I haven't received anything on that, I know it's a little early. I have reached out to the Little League Board, I have not heard anything. We need to get our contract renewed.
Yeah, we didn't have one last year that I know of, if we did, I don't know about, but we need a contract with the Little League.
Well, and that's, the other thing is going back through all the contracts that had been signed, looking at them previously. In those contracts, it states that they are the ones that are supposed to be financially responsible for winterizing the bathrooms. And as far as I know, that has not been uh like, that's not been something that we have had them do, even though it's a part of their contract. We need to get a contract in place with them for this year and we need to make sure that they're reaching out and providing their schedule. Um, especially as we expand programs for the community, it's
Well, that's, something else I was gonna mention to you about your, the farmer's market. Your dates, are they gonna interfere with Little?
They haven't submitted any dates and as far as I know, they haven't set any game dates yet. I did email that.
They have games every Saturday.
Well, and I
During the summer months.
We're not utilizing the fields at all.
Okay.
Um, it's all on the backside of the park, so that map in the very back, it shows kind of where like the storage shed is and the busy. That will be where everything's at there. I have spoken to Wevo about the food trucks in the um west parking lot there. Technically, that is Western Boone property. Um, the superintendent reached out to me today, I've got some, um, I have a permit that I have to submit through them, it's free to file to request. Um, and if they approve it, the food truck vendors will be required to list the Western Boone Community School Corporation as additionally insured, including Thorntown and the town park. Doesn't cost the businesses anything extra, but it covers everybody's butts, basically, see why?
Were you, were you here when that circus was there the last time? Was that, was the baseball field that's closest to?
I don't really remember where it was at, to be
My, my question is, do they, do they have enough room between the two baseball diamonds to put on a circus? Because you got, you got a diamond up on this corner and then you got the main diamond down there.
Tyler and Mike Henson, who is one of our volunteers, he's also on the front of the Parks Board. Went out and measured the park specifically for the vendor maps, that we knew exactly how many vendor booths we could fit and what size spaces we had. Ideally, I wouldn't think that we should do it in the fields. Those fields are already bad enough for the kids to play in, as somebody that has a kid over there.
Where are you gonna put this, I'm talking about the circus.
The backside of the park is more, is easily, it exceeds that three hundred by three hundred radius that they required. So they could be in the grass away from the fields and away from the park.
So the last time, they were just south of Mill Street.
Okay.
If it's the one I'm thinking of, and was sponsored by the police.
Yeah, it was, and, yeah, cause we had tickets.
I lived right there and I had a horrible time. And the police would not help me because it was a police function. So I personally, we're gonna do something about parking if we do that.
Yes.
I'm not against the circus, but I had people parked clear up against my buildings, parked in my pine trees. That will not happen again.
I don't blame you.
So I am going to say that will need to be taken care of.
I'm making notes of all of this as well, so that I can bring this up and make sure that we address each and every one of these things.
Right.
Um, I will say, I know for the farmer's market, we have to have clear, wrapped-off areas for parking. That has already been discussed with the town of um insurance. And we've already discussed it with Wevo and we have a plan in place for that, so.
What do you plan on using for parking?
Western Boone Parking Lot. Now, depending, I still haven't received um the dates for the Little League. Which I guess they changed it to Town and Country, in case you guys did not know, that's important for you to know. Um, obviously, usually they'll park around there during games. If they do not have a game, then obviously that is first come, first served parking. Along the grass where we usually have people park during events at the park, because we have that tiny little parking space. What was suggested that we do by Kara is we get the metal stakes and some neon orange plastic fencing that we can wrap out between those, because we need to have a clear spot where people need to stop so that they don't go plowing into a farmer's market.
Was this set up to be supported by the police again? Or is this, is this gonna be supported by, yeah, or supported by us? Either, either the town or the park department?
It's my understanding it would be the parks, the police department hasn't even discussed it with me. I didn't know that Braden had sent that to you guys.
Frank, Frank sent an email.
Previously, they were the ones that sponsored it, I had no idea that it had even been previously sponsored till today.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely a, a police fundraiser.
Yeah, the last, and it wasn't.
It was the last time, I know that.
It was probably, I remember it was when Angie was still here, because that was the
Okay.
big argument on who was gonna pay to have the fence fixed. Police Department.
I don't know any reason. Well, they have to list us as additionally insured and from the information they've sent, if something like that were to happen again, they would be responsible for repairing it and replacing it.
I know, I bought tickets and gave them away to the kids, they're giving, giving away to kids. Cause they went around to the businesses and wanted everybody to buy tickets and I bought, I think I bought five tickets.
Is the circus gonna give? I'm gonna say the
They give us, they give us tickets in advance to sell, I believe it's a hundred tickets. Um, after the first hundred tickets or I, there's, I will forward them the email, it is in there. Um, I, like I said, I have not contacted them, we just voted today to see where this goes and talk to you guys further before actually reaching out to them. Because I found out today that it had been previously done, I felt that it was important, since you guys have been here a lot longer than me, that I get your guys' input on it, it seems like necessary.
Well, I don't have a problem except for, for what he's talking about on the parking situation. There, you know, people don't need to be up next to somebody's house that are across, off of Mill Street, actually. And that needs to be taken care of, but I don't have a real problem with it.
And I, I didn't have a problem even with the parking in my grass. They did two shows, they did an early show and a late show.
That was in there.
And uh, the way it fell, we had a lot of rain. And we come out of the house to go wherever we were going and uh, I'd see that the police were parking them right up to my trees. So I went over and said, I don't want them in my yard because of all the rain. Had the rain, I couldn't have cared less. But anyway, so they had them move them back onto the pavement. We came home and our yard was full, rutted up. Then I had to deal with a Frankfurt officer. And that's where it started getting rugged.
Okay. So parking, definitely logistics of that needs to be addressed, um, and I will make sure when I
Parking is scheduled with the uh, if it's, well, do they give you a possible timeframe?
Yes, they will when I speak to them.
Well, the reason I'm asking is if it's during baseball games or baseball, that, that all needs to be coordinated because you don't need, you don't need kids playing baseball if the circus is going on right adjacent to them.
The original email came from Frank on January twenty-fourth. Um, you responded to it, you sent, you forwarded to the park. But it was, they were talking Thursday, June fifth. Uh, two shows, five and seven thirty.
Little League
I just, I remember the five, I thought it was five and seven, five and seven thirty.
Little League almost over by June, cause they start in May.
They run through to the end of June and then if they have some kind of special thing, they do stuff in July.
Yeah, okay.
And I mean, that's the other thing that needs to be brought up here today is we do, I don't know who on Town Council deals with this, I know previously it was Sarah. We need to get that contract with, I guess now they're Town and Country, that needs to be changed in the contract with Amy. And we need to try to get that information, I've tried to reach out to Matt, I've sent an email, I have not heard back. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're
Who's in charge, Matt?
Matt McDonald is the director there, so.
Do you want, I mean, we had a proposed contract for twenty twenty-four, Jessica got his signed contract back to put in the file, so do you want that? That same contract is, as the way it has been in the past, typed up for twenty twenty-five and present that at the next meeting?
Yeah. It's probably probably just use the same one, might have to change the name of it from
Yeah, and I, that may be
And I have a copy of their contract, it's pretty much the same, it's pretty much
You say they've changed their name to Town and Country?
Town and Country, they're no longer called Little League. I think it's who they're affiliated with, if I'm correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess there's some other neighboring communities that have also switched to Town and Country.
Well, the easiest thing to do is just tell them if they're, if they're not gonna sign a contract, they're not gonna use the field. It's that simple.
Well, and the fact that they didn't last year and they used it, like, that's, and that's a liability.
We didn't do anything about it, we let it go the whole year, didn't do anything about it.
But that can't be the case, I mean, it's a liability thing, um, if something were to happen, at the end of the day, that's, it's town property. You guys need to have a certificate of liability insurance. From what Kara said and everything we're looking at, I mean, as Thorntown develops, it's really gonna be important that we start getting these contracts signed.
Okay, you got, you're, you're one minute short of twenty minutes.
I gotta go anyway, I would like to go get some rest, but, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it, thank you.
I will look into that uh grant for you, so.
Okay, minutes for
And I, I have
January twenty-third.
It's January thirteenth, I, I had a title on my agenda.
Yeah, you got one, one.
Bender got the wrong spot.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor's second.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And when it's approved, so the minutes are
Okay, and then you sign on the line.
Sign on the line.
On the line.
Okay.
I forgot to go ahead and put Randy's name on this.
Didn't put Randy's name on there? Shame on you. Okay. We've got your report coming up next.
Okay. All right, um, the first thing I have, I've sent you all a copy of this APB register. This is something that gets done every year when I do my year-end stuff. Sometimes, I don't know why, there's APVs that do not get put on one of those registers for whatever reason, so So that's what this is. It's a list of what those items were. So I'm hoping that you guys will approve that and sign it. Um. I will be on, I believe it's February the twelfth, attending the State of the County Breakfast. Again, I've done that for the past couple of years, I guess. And I don't have the questions yet, but the, the Boone EDC and the Chamber of Commerce sponsor that breakfast. And on the panel, there's somebody present from each municipality. And then the Boone EDC will send us some questions that. Maybe ask of us on that panel. Usually, um, in my experience, when they, when we first introduce ourselves. They want us to go ahead and tell a little bit about what's going on in Thorntown. So, um. The most recent that I have heard is Arbor is looking at April for breaking ground. So. Hopefully that'll all work. Okay, something else that has happened, um. Oxana has left MS Consulting. I have talked with her, um, have not talked with Dan about the situation at all. But he will be here Wednesday, and I'm sure we'll have a conversation Wednesday. I believe MS Consulting has another planner, just not as experienced as Oxana. And of course, our contract is with MS Consulting for a planner and someone to do our zoning. So we're not sure yet where we're going with it. Um, the new company that Oxana is going with. They do have other planners. So. Depending, depending. If we want to retain her as. Our planner. We can probably always reach out. So, um, I don't. I haven't looked. I need to look and see in the contract that we signed, you know, if it says that we can cancel the contract. So. That's a little bit about Oxana. Um.
Well, just for the, since it's a short council, but just so you guys will know. I personally would like to retain her. Simply because she's, she has put together all the things that we've gotten up to this point, and so she knows the town. And she knows the boundaries and she knows the things that need to be done. If we can break the contract, I'd rather. Put her on there with the new company if it's possible to do that. I don't know how you guys feel. And you haven't been around long enough, probably even know her.
Right.
But she, she's a lot like the gal that just left. She doesn't know when to quit talking, but she does a good job. That's the only thing I got against her. She does a good job on what she does, and she's very, uh, very well versed in, in doing that job. I would rather. Keep her than I would try to break somebody else in as coming off new because. Uh. The company that we're with, we have not had another planner, city planner. Other than Oxana, so. That's my thought right now. I mean, we need to see, we need more information from Karine and from, and we'll be talking to. Um.
Dan.
Dan, yeah, on Wednesday. So we can, we can kind of maybe. Get a feeling for what we could do, cause I don't know if we can break that contract, but I would think we could. So anyway, go ahead. That's, I just wanted to throw in what I felt that we should keep her.
Okay, the other thing, I just got this today. My spring ILMCT conference is in March. Um, they, once they open up the block arrangements for the hotel, they go fast. So I thought, oh, I'm not waiting. I'm gonna go ahead and bring it in tonight. So, um, the, the conference fee, um, for all my days that I'm there, which is Sunday night through. It goes through Thursday morning about eleven or eleven thirty. But I have looked at the agenda for that morning. And there's not really a session on Thursday morning that is dire for me to attend, so. I'm, I'm only asking to be there Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night. I will check out Wednesday before checkout time, so I don't, I don't need that extra night that I have usually had. So the, the full conference is four hundred and fifty dollars. The lodging would be five hundred and thirty one. And all of that gets divided between general sewer, water and electric. And that makes it two forty-five, twenty-five per fund. So I am, I am requesting to.
I'll make a motion that we. Provide the funds for Karine to go to that. Whatever that is. That bunch of initials.
ILMCT.
Yeah, that too.
That is Indiana League of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers.
I knew that. My second. On favor?
Alright, yeah.
Randy, did you, I?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, um. The next thing we have. Um. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two. This is a resolution for year end appropriations transfer. This is something we do every year. So for example. On our appropriation report. Any. Of the line items that went into the negative. What the system does is it goes back in, so you got, you all know how that's divided out. It has. Lines across there, has category one, two, whatever. So it can, the computer can go within that category. Take money from someplace else that wasn't spent. Apply it to the negative figure and make the report look nice and pretty for the end of the year. It doesn't change anything about how much money we spent, anything like that. It just moves it around. So, um. Uh, I'll go ahead and just read this thing. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two. Whereas there is a need to transfer appropriations from some accounts to other accounts. At this time to keep the accounts in positive figures. Due to expending more funds in some accounts and less in other accounts than was estimated in the twenty twenty-four budget. Whereas the transfer does not require the expenditure of more money than the total amount set out in the twenty twenty-four budget. Whereas Indiana Code six dash one point one dash eighteen dash six allows for the transfer of appropriations. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of Town of Thorntown, Boone County, Indiana. That authority be granted by the council to the clerk treasurer to transfer appropriations between budget classifications. Within a department or office as necessary for the twenty twenty-four year end business. So, and they know this, but since you're new, Randy, technically, this is something that a clerk treasurer doesn't have to have council approval. But I prefer to keep it all on top of the table, so everybody knows why the, why the figure's different.
Have you looked at that? I'm so happy, no.
Oh, it was an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just basically moving.
We need a motion though.
From one, from one account to the other, like this one was negative. Negative fifteen eighty-three, so they just moved it from a different account into that one.
Okay.
To make it balanced.
Just to make it.
Right. It's gonna be in the seventy dollar fifty-nine, ninety-three cents. You're just, you're just moving one account to another account, so it's not in the negative.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we allow Karine to keep us out of trouble and straighten out the finances in the year.
So I get your motion?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody?
I will share something else about my year end stuff. And I've already, I don't, I don't think I told you this last time. If I did, I apologize. Too many things going on in my head. Um. Because of the way payroll happened. Did I mention this?
You did.
Okay. So, um, it makes our, our year end fund in payroll, it makes it show negative. Because a lot of things got posted on December thirty first. But when it comes to the transfer of money. On the computer, it doesn't transfer till actual payday, January third. So it. We weren't insufficient of funds in the bank. It just looks weird on paper. But I can, I've got documentation to prove why everything looks the way it does. Okay, another piece of paper that we have, um. We get statements from the Bank of New York Mellon every month. The Bank of New York Mellon is who we pay for our wastewater loan. There's what I'm gonna classify, a lot of weird stuff that goes on with that that. I never understood in the very, very beginning of time. So all this time, I have just been taking those statements, put them in a folder, file them away. Well, I found out that. This money, when we pay Bank of New York Mellon. Evidently, our monthly money. Goes into. An account somewhere and it starts earning interest. And then our actual loan payments are paid. I believe twice a year. I'd have to go look that up. I think it's twice a year. So then the Bank of New York Mellon withdraws from those funds that are in the bank. And they pay it. So I found out that I'm supposed to be recording whatever that interest earned. I'm supposed to be recording that. On the Keystone bookkeeping system. Holy ballgame, so. I tried to have another clerk treasurer help me. That wasn't going so well, so I just reached out to Jared at Crone. And asked him if he would help me with it, because he works with that stuff. So he came up one day. We went through everything. Um. The way Bank of New York Mellon does it, we actually have four accounts with them. One of them has ten dollars and some odd cents sitting in it. So. We sent an email to Derek, my contact at. Bank of New York. The ten dollars and some odd cents can be applied to our loan amount. So he's gonna take care of that. Then we have an account with eighty-three thousand dollars sitting in it. That is evidently money that we had, when we had to put. Make, you know, SRF required that we had all this money. This is evidently a part of that money that was never spent. So we're allowed to request it and have that money back. So. I'm so thankful I talked to Jared about it, cause I didn't have any idea. So we have this handy dandy little piece of paper called incumbency certificate authorized callbacks. Um, that, uh. Grumpy and Bruce both need to sign. Kind of weird. Um, both need to sign and then I sign it. And I get this back to Derek and he will return that money to us. And when I get that money. We will put it in sewer depreciation, so that it's always. Still being used for sewer. So.
Bruce, do you remember? Do you remember? Us, uh. Sending that money to get that loan?
I don't remember all the specifics of it.
I don't remember, I don't even remember doing it, but it's what it's.
Ah, it's because I had to do it all.
Where, where do we?
That's, that's the deal where SRF wanted to close, but the county didn't have their money yet.
I remember when.
And I had to give us a million and a half dollars in a hurry.
Well, when that wasn't, we borrowed money here and then paid it back and then when, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Where am I supposed to sign it?
Oh, right up there by your name is the best place I've seen.
Up here?
Yeah.
Actually, it was supposed to be down there.
Oh. Well, I'll sign down there too.
Down there, go back gray.
I'd rather provide too much than not enough. Okay, we'll get that sent in and put some more money in our bank.
Okay.
And once, once that money gets here. I'll take a look at our depreciation fund and we can probably send some of that money over to Trust Indiana.
Okay. Is that it for you?
Um.
Okay, unfinished business. We got anything?
No.
Bruce? Randy?
Nope.
Uh, new business? We need to, uh, plan an executive meeting. Um. To consider prospective employment. What this has to do is with, uh. I guess we want to say what it has to do with, right?
Mm-hmm.
Taking a look at that, uh. What's his name again? I can't remember.
Jeff Wolf.
Yeah, Jeff Wolf. Uh, who has been a Boone County Commissioner, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And he's been here a couple of times. Bruce, you talked to him, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
And he has made it known that he's available. I don't know whether you consider it to be hired, but. Uh, if that's the way it is and, and we decide to do that, then. Uh, we need a meeting with all of us together, executive meeting, to talk about. What he can do for us. And see if we want to utilize him to help us out. Uh, with the expansion that's coming up of the town. And probably to help, uh, maybe get other monies in from different things, so. Uh, have you guys got preferences to when you're available? And I know probably the thing we'd have trouble with in the evening, Sean, isn't it? Cause he doesn't, he doesn't get in town till about seven o'clock.
Well, yeah, I'd have to, you'd have to check with him on time, but. He's usually, I think, gets into town late. He's usually walking into this late, a couple of minutes till, so.
Well, what are you thinking maybe, uh, on a weekend? As opposed to?
It doesn't matter to me. I mean, in the evening. During the week is fine with me.
Even on.
Randy, what's your problem?
What's my problem?
Have you, have you got a problem? No, man, you got a problem with that?
No, I'm, I'm good with the evening or weekend. Probably seven, seven thirty would be best for me.
Seven or seven thirty?
Yeah, if it's an evening, if it's the weekend. Whenever.
Um.
Except for Sunday morning.
Do we wanna try to fit this in before the next meeting?
I think we should, yeah.
Well, let's pick a couple of dates and then. I can check, of course, with Sean and Jeff. I'll probably just include everybody in an email and say, here, here's a couple of options.
I'm good for next Monday at, say, seven or seven thirty, whatever's convenient with you guys, if you guys are.
That's fine with me.
Okay, good. How about next Monday?
On the tenth?
Yeah.
Okay. I hope it works for me. I have Fletcher that day. Um. If she gets held up at the hospital, that might be an issue, but. Okay. Two ten, seven o'clock.
Seven, okay, for both of you?
Sure.
Okay. Need to make sure Sean knows and Sarah knows. Okay. About the employee handbook, what were we gonna do with that?
Well, nothing was ever mentioned about reviewing the employee handbook. So the question is, does council want to review the employee handbook? And I have had a situation come up. And I have emailed Amy. And asked her to review it. Um, but since you have your book right. But since you have your book right there in front of you, Randy, will you find the page that talks about PTO?
PTO?
I'm wanting to say thirty.
Thirty? Paytime off, twenty.
So the way, oh, you had yours too. The way we have that written in there. So for example, we hired Ben in December. According to the way that is written in that book, he automatically gets six days of PTO. And then January one, for first year of service, he gets eleven days. So the way that's written in that book, he gets seventeen days of PTO during his first year of employment. And then the second year of employment, he's going to drop down to eleven days. And after that situation happened, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, I don't know that that was ever what the intention was. And I think we're missing some language someplace, or maybe I'm missing language looking at it.
When do you say we hired him?
December. So I'm thinking PTO days like, starting with July, we need to take a look at those again.
Well, right here though, on this schedule, the first year through the fifth year is eleven days, okay? But it says carryover days are five days.
Yeah.
So we would get five days this year plus his eleven days, is that what you're saying? So he'd get sixteen days?
Yeah, but I don't know that that's ever what the true intention was with the PTO. So I'm, I'm waiting on, on a response from Amy. But I don't, I don't think the way that's written is the way we intended.
What month was he hired?
December.
Yeah, he gets more time off than Gary does.
But in all honesty, to look at that, so even, I think it's in, if you're hired in June, you get nine days.
Right.
Immediately.
I mean, that's what, that's, that's what it was meant to say.
Well, I don't, I don't think we've got it in there what we wanted it to say.
What did we want it to say?
Well, what other place?
Because it's, because it's a, what would you call it? You're, I mean, you're getting your PTO days.
Oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's go back up here and look at this. So it's a month higher, December, six days.
Pro-rated, you, you're getting, you're getting a pro-rated PTO days on, based on when you were hired.
Okay, but you get six days, but you can only carry over five days.
And it ha-
So now he's down to one day.
And according to our handbook, you're supposed to complete your ninety day probation period before you get those days. So you see what I'm saying? There's, there's, we're missing some language someplace because
Yeah.
where, where else are you going to go to work and get hired in December and automatically get six days of vacation?
It does, it does say in there that you have to complete ninety days before you get any PTO?
It does say that in there, yeah.
Well, then for October, November, December, then you, those would just all be zeros.
That's what I think, I think that needs to be changed. I'm not even sure that, starting in, starting in July, nine, nine days of vacation and you're not even going to be here six months yet.
July is eight days.
I, I think that that needs to be revisited. I mean, whatever it says now, and once I get a final confirmation from Amy or if we have to go to our HR attorney that we use, I mean, what, whatever it says is what we have to give Ben no matter what because that's the way it was written at time of his employment.
The way you're describing it, it should say your, your, your PTO day should start at the end of your ninety day, say you're, you're hired in, in January, January, February, March. You don't have your PTO for those days, they start in April, after your ninety days.
Right, but the way it's written now, come April, we have to give him those days plus eleven for his first year.
No, I don't think so, I think.
His first ninety days, he doesn't get any.
Right.
So it'd be from, from March on or April on.
Well, no, because he hired in December, so you have December, January and February, he shouldn't get any days and then starting in March, if you look at this, in March he has ten days. So that's the way I look at it.
So.
Isn't that the way you look at it, Bruce? If it says you don't get anything for three months, that'd be December, January and February. So this year he would get ten days. That's what, that's what it says, but I, I think you're right. I don't think it was there, this wasn't designed to have.
I don't think it's designed the way we really would want it to be.
The, the wording may just be, e- either the days are wrong or the wording's wrong. Saying you're, your month of hire or you're, your PTO starts in the fourth month. So whatever your fourth month would be, so if he's hired in December, he, December, January, February, his PTO would start in March. That's the way it should be worded. And, and your PTO starts based on your fourth month of employment. I don't know if that's, I don't know if I'm saying.
Where are you reading that, Bruce? I don't see it.
No, it doesn't say that, it's right here.
It'd be right here.
It needs to be more specific. And the thing is, as we, as we go forward.
But it doesn't follow.
The younger town.
Where does it say the three, I don't see where it says the three months.
We've got to have our i's dotted and t's crossed.
I don't, I don't see that either, she said it's there somewhere.
The probationary, it, it's, it is in there someplace. I can't tell you exactly where at this moment, but, but it is in there that they have a ninety day probationary period.
I don't see it, I mean, go back over here, you're paid time off.
Well, go, go back to your table of contents in the client and see where there's about probation period. Yes, there is.
I think Bruce and Gary had it right, it's not worded correctly someplace.
Yeah.
This interview is carryover from twenty-four years on five.
The PTO would, your PTO would start based on your fourth month of employment after your three month.
So you're, so you're saying that starting April, then he should only have six days?
No, ten. It says right here.
December, January, February, so March, March would be his fourth month.
March and April, he gets ten days. But now, let's go back, let's go back and look at this. What date in December was he hired in?
December sixteenth.
Okay, do you count the whole month of December or you go from December sixteenth to January sixteen?
This says ninety days.
Yeah, you start at his hire date and go ninety days. So January, February, mid-March.
Mid-March, oh, but if you look here, in mid-March, he gets ten days. According to this schedule right here.
But then, when we, when we get to the bottom and talk about years one through fifteen,
He gets eleven days.
Or one through five, they get eleven days. So which is it and what's?
But he's not in a full year then, right?
Right.
So I mean, it'd be from April, mid-April.
It's, it's the way it's written that it's.
Yeah, but it would be right, I think you'd go by this one, he'd get ten days because you go down here, that's the, that's the credit schedule.
Well, what I'm getting at, the point is, however it's written, it's set in black and white. We have to abide by how it's written. So if this isn't what we need it to be, we're going to have to change it. So we'll find that out when I get an answer from Amy.
Well, I don't see in here where it says it got ninety days.
Did you find it by chance? It's, it's there someplace. Introductory period, yes.
If that works out, we'll get it.
New, newly hired employees of the town, but the exception of police officers, shall be required to complete a ninety day introductory period.
Okay.
The introductory period allows management to closely observe and evaluate police fitness to ability for the position which they've been hired. Only those employees who demonstrate an acceptable standard of conduct and performance during this period shall be retained in a position of town council and/or the employee supervisor will make a value, evaluation following thirty, sixteen or ninety days. The evaluation should be discussed with the employees. The introductory employee not be allowed to take PTO during the introductory period.
Right.
That's in there. The introductory employee will not be allowed to take PTO during the introductory period. They may take any, any occurred compensatory time. The introductory employee will receive holiday pay if the holiday occurs during that introductory period. So.
He can't take it, but the way it's written, because he was hired in December, he gets six days. So when the introductory period is up, he gets six days plus he gets eleven days because it's his first year. I think we're missing something in explanation. So more than likely, we're going to end up and have to take it to Craig DeValt, who we've used as our HR. And they're probably going to have to put the correct language in there for however we intend it. Do we intend for somebody?
Well, I don't see where you think he's supposed to get that ten or eleven days because it says right there, he doesn't get anything for ninety days.
He doesn't get to use them.
Well, he doesn't have them. If he doesn't get to use them, he doesn't have them.
Well, but according to that, in December, if you're hired in December, you automatically have six days and after your introductory period, you get to take them.
Well, then, I mean, all you have to do would be change the language to the introductory employee will not receive any PTO during their introductory period. PTO will begin in fourth month of employment.
But we have to change the language, I can't just make that up.
Well, I know, I know we have to change it.
So we have to change the language.
So we'll change it.
And, and like I say, we may.
For now, he's going to get six days plus his eleven days for next year. He can only carry five over, so he's getting five days.
So.
Plus eleven for his first year.
But, you know, how many, how many places of employment do you go and your first year, you get to take fifteen days off?
Well, first.
Not very many.
Well, my, when I went to work at Bell, you got, you got one week vacation the first year.
And, I mean, a lot of, used to anyway, you had to work for a full year before you got any vacation.
No, Bell wasn't like that, it was, I think we got one week the first year.
So we're, we're going to have to give it to him for this year, but I mean, we don't have any new employees right now, so I mean, we can get it changed.
Yeah, Ben's the only one that it is affecting at this point. Because Dalton Kane in June, Dalton got nine days and.
Carryovers, the carryover days must be used by March thirty-first of the next year as well, so.
Yes, yes.
So if there's a carryover days in there and he doesn't do anything between now and the end of March, well, he's, he's lost the days anyway. But I don't know if he even knows it.
You know, I guess, does council want to review the entire handbook and see if there's anything else that needs changed?
Just reviewed it.
Or do you just want to address the PTO portion?
Let's just address that.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to address that and find out, are, are re, reworded to do what we.
Basically reworded is to say you don't get any PTO during your introductory period. Your PTO will begin in your fourth month of employment and then use the same, if we want to change those number of days, but your PTO will begin in your fourth month of employment. So if your fourth month is.
Now, you want to say your fourth month or you want to go days? Because the fourth month of employment would, would, would dissenuate that he was hired at the first of December.
Well, you got to get the wording right, but you get my.
That's what the.
Yeah, I know, but we bear it up for ninety days.
That's what the legal people are for, to make sure the language is the way it needs to be.
It better be for ninety days as, as opposed to the, if you did it the fourth month, you're gonna, if a guy's hired the thirty-first of one month, you're giving him the whole month, he don't get anything. So if it's ninety days, it'll be, it'll be three months. At ninety days, it'll be three months, he, he doesn't get any days. And then after that, he starts picking up days.
I, I almost think, let's say even, okay, so if, if they're, if they're hired in June, they still have six months to go. So maybe allowing some PTO days, okay, fine. But July, August on down, I don't think it should be that many days.
Well, it's, it's already written in there what we must have decided because it's got a schedule for how many days.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying. I don't think that, I don't think that, I don't think the way that reads is what the intention was.
We can change that too, we could keep, I mean, if you get hired in September, come December, you're going to get six days. Right, yeah, but you could change those number of days.
Well.
And, and even, even with the month of June.
I think those should all say zero and then when January one rolls around, then they automatically get their eleven.
Yeah, because they're, they're going with, uh,
Or maybe.
July, August and September, you're getting eight days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could change that, you could change that to, you could knock them down to July, August, you could, you could knock that down to four days if you wanted to. And then October, November, December, you can knock those down to two days.
We'll see what Amy says and then Grumpy and I meet with Amy Wednesday morning at eleven-thirty and we'll see if she has an answer by then and then we can talk about that to see what we need to do to make it le, legal for the future. Okay.
Yeah, because I, I agree with you, I think it ought to be, you know, if you, well, just say we hired somebody for the utility department and hired them in October and they start work, well, they would fall under, if we reworded this, they'd fall under the ninety days, they wouldn't get those six days.
Correct.
They wouldn't get them.
To reword it, yes.
If it was bigger, reword it. But if they got those six days and the guy, and the head guy over there is counting on somebody to be there at work and the guy's taking these six days in a short period of time before the end of the year, I mean, I don't think, that doesn't sound like a very good deal to me.
I don't think that that was ever our intention, so. I think that's one of those things that until you have a situation appear right in your face, you don't realize what that puts, what that said. Okay.
Okay, so we're going to have, we're going to do some work on that one.
Yeah.
Lions Park, I'd like to make a motion that we get an appraisal because the town, what is he, the town?
And Joseph Wells, our asset inventory guy.
That guy, he said we need an appraisal on how much that park's worth and we don't have one. We didn't have one when we got it, we just took the park, but we had no idea what it's worth.
He actually told me that going forward, anything that we acquire, we need to do an appraisal.
So I'd like to make a motion that we have the Lions Park appraised and I don't have a monetary figure.
Somebody talking Jeff Wolf about, isn't that, isn't that what he does?
I think he still does.
Well, let's amend your motion to, let's do it, let's get a price first.
Okay. Yeah, I thought about that too, but I don't know who to get it with. Maybe we talk, maybe talk to Wolf about it, does he, does he do appraisal?
I know he used to.
So it might be worth finding out if there's other people around here that do.
Didn't Jerry Alexander did some for us.
Did one before. I'm wanting to say that it was in the neighborhood of five hundred some, five hundred dollars or something. I don't, I don't know what it costs for an appraisal, I don't have any idea.
Let's, let's get it, let's try to collect some prices.
Okay.
Find someone and collect a price then, then vote on it. But yeah, we probably should, we probably need to.
I'm thinking if you do a house, it's somewhere around five hundred dollars. That's about the minimum if you're going to refinance or buy a house. I think you're in the five hundred dollar category.
That would probably be viewed as commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I have, we talked about this, uh, E, the, uh, the discussion about the, the water plant property owners down there, is that one behind Mike Spear's house? There's a little section of ground that up to this point, Dan Crenshaw thinks that we need to talk to the property owner, which is the next house over from Mike Spears down by the water plant. That own that little section of land that we're gonna need that if we expand our, our, uh, water plant to have a drive, I guess, that goes around it. So we need that little piece of property. And I don't have a problem talking to those people. I, I just haven't done it. And you remember what their names are?
Beck told.
Beck told.
And something else that we're, we're gonna have to do is, but I don't know that we can do this until a decision is made as to where the well is going to go. But if the well is going to go down where the other two wells are, then we need to talk with that property owner and try to determine and figure out where the easement is through there.
Yeah.
And find out whether, whether we have enough ground to put the well on, or if we have to have more conversation with him.
We don't know who that is either, do we?
Kevin Beck.
Kevin Beck.
Mm-hmm.
Where's that?
I've got a phone number for him.
Which property are you talking about?
That'd be down there where the wells are now.
The lower level.
Be down in that area. If that's where we end up putting the third well, which I totally disagree with, but, uh, we should know more, Bruce, on Wednesday, when we have this meeting with, uh, we're, there'll be a guy there that drills wells. Plus Crenshaw, plus, I don't know who else. Is Amy gonna be there?
I don't think so.
Okay. But, uh.
I don't know.
Max, Max wanted two of his people there with him, but hell, just one person with him. He can't do that because he'd have a quorum even with one person, 'cause they only got a three-man board. So I don't know what's gonna happen there with Max.
They're, they're not coming. It'll just be Max.
Oh, okay. So Max is gonna be there. And we're gonna talk about the, where we can put the well and what we wanna do, I think, looking forward, is we want the well down there by the other water tower, unless they got some big significant reason why not.
Big significant reasons, two and a half million dollars.
Well, why do we, we had the same situation out here with this sewage plant when we listened to whomever tell us that, oh, we'll mix this stuff up and it'll hold water. And then we spent an extra couple, three hundred thousand dollars to put in a liner. And if we're gonna build, if the next place, if we're looking ahead, the next place they're gonna build, somebody's gonna buy up off of Dickerson's, that land out there by Max's house, and that'll be the next big plant. So then now, we're gonna be in a water situation all over again. So I'd rather, I'd rather we look ahead five to twenty years and put stuff in for this town that's gonna be there for them. It may cost more money now, but it's gonna save money in the long run. 'Cause if we have to, if they build someplace that's gonna take water out of that tower down there, then we're gonna be doing this all over again.
We're filling that well, tower now with the wells we have.
But that doesn't seem to be what the problem is. The problem is, is I damn, I damn it, saying that.
They, they want us to have more pumping capacity than what we currently have.
Yeah, I think we got enough water to run all one hundred and sixty-three homes out there, but there's one saying that we don't.
Well, for any future growth for the town?
No, but they're shutting us off at the first, at the first seventy homes.
They are.
They're shutting us off. We can't put any more homes out there than seventy until we, we come up with some other.
Everything we discuss has to be for the growth of the town in the future.
Well.
Not because of any particular development. The growth of the town for the future.
Well, the growth of the town for the future is gonna come into those fields around here. It's either gonna be there or north of town. And that's gonna have to be north of that bike, or that gravel road out there because they'll never, Boone County'll never allow anything built down there in that bottom. Hell, that thing floods too many seasons. So that'll, you know, the, the, the natural building spots either gonna be west of this new place out here now, or it's gonna be south over there by Max's house. That's, that's the, where else are they gonna build?
North.
Well, that's why, north, they're gonna have to go out there past that gravel road. You can't build north of town.
Between the junkyard and the sewer pond.
Sand.
That's all sand and it's all flood.
About twenty feet is sand.
Yeah, you're gonna learn up.
Johnny Ford's house, the last one on Market Street or whatever, uh, that house has got four, four or five sometimes, constantly. Got a finished basement. It's split it three times since the house has been built. It's just when they dug down to, to put his basement instead, they had to actually put solid, uh, drop solid concrete walls instead of building a concrete basement. Had to drop walls to keep the sand from running in to the basement. That's why, I don't remember the, the lady that put the house, Truitt's house in, that's why they didn't develop back there is because they started digging and found all the sand.
Yeah, the only place you can build north would be north Sugar Creek. And it'd be past that gravel road 'cause they, they won't ever allow anything built down there in that bottom. You'd have to build on stilts, and even then, you wouldn't be able to get your out. You know, I've seen that where I've, hell, I've swam up in that field from jumping off the bridge. I mean, that, that thing's flooded clear up to the base of where Chuck lived out there. But I, I'm just, I'm just saying something we need to look at and not make a hasty decision on this well and, and the wellhouse because, uh, Thorn Town, with, with the advent of, of what's going on over at Leaven, and Thorn Town's gonna grow, and it's, it has to. Well, there's nothing to stop it from growing.
No.
Okay. Lions Club barbecue area, uh, my thought was, if it's, if you guys think it's okay, Pat McPeak is the one that hit us up about, they wanted, K F P wanted to keep that end down there. And I thought about just going down there with the tape major and tape off how, what, how much of that end it is and how wide it is. And then we'd make up a thing and just lease it to them for a dollar a year.
Now.
If, if that's a doable thing. I don't know. We need to talk to Amy about that.
So when I had a discussion with Amy about this before, and I don't know if we have other options yet, hopefully we find that out Wednesday. If we want to have a contract and lease this solely to K F P, we have to do, just like we did upstairs for Wave. And we have to have a description written up saying that we have this ground for lease. It has to be published in the newspaper and see what we get. So I don't know, I don't know if there's any other way yet for us to let the K F P use this exclusively and no one else. I mean, I would think, but I don't know, that if anybody has to come to the town council to request usage of it, town council has a right to deny. Or, I don't know. But I do know that if we, if we offer it for lease, it has to be done just like upstairs.
I don't think we're gonna have. I don't even think we really have to lease it. They, they can't cook on them things down there without the grates. If K F P keeps the grates put away, no one's gonna use it. And in, in all honesty, I don't think anybody's gonna wanna use it. So I don't really think that we would even have to lease it to them. Maybe cover the liability somehow. But if we cover the liability somehow, it's just, we're gonna let them use that. When, when it's time for them to use it, they're gonna break the grates out. Any other time, no one's gonna be able to use it anywhere.
Insurance is going to want the K F P to list the town as an additional insured.
Right. And I think Pat said that they were fine with that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you have to have some type of contract for repair if, you know, that sheet metal's not gonna last forever? You know, something that, what if it breaks, whatever, do you guys, does the town fix it or does the K F P fix it?
Well, you ain't gonna fix it. That's simple. If you wanna keep using it, you're gonna, they'll fix it.
Right. I, I mean, I agree a hundred percent, but.
That's, that's a good point, though.
It'd have to be in writing somewhere. I mean, we're in a day and age that everything's gonna be perfect, worded and all that here. Somebody's gonna find a loophole. And I can't imagine K F P doing that. They say we broke, we'll fix it. It's all good, but, uh, but it would probably think it'd have to be, have to be worded somewhere on paper.
Yeah.
The fact of leasing it or whatever.
Well, I agree. The day of the handshake is just about over, which I don't, I hate that because I don't know why we can't let them use it and not, well, I agree with you that we don't have to make up something, but I, I don't think if, if it's worded right, there's nobody gonna show up and say, yeah, we wanna use that too. Even if we advertise it, I don't think anybody would say anything. But, I mean, it's just, it just depends on whether what we wanna do. We wanna have, we wanna go through and measure and say, you guys got use of this so many feet this way and so many feet that way. I mean, uh, that's what I, my intent was because that would, that would tell them the specific area which is already there, uh, we're not changing anything.
Here's, here's.
Well, I'd say here's a, here's a question, though. I don't think it matters, you know, if somebody wants to get their chicken or their pork chop and then go over there in the shelter house and sit and eat it. Shouldn't be an issue. I don't know, and Sarabi might have a better answer on this, if the K F P have to have a permit from the health department. They might have to have a permit from the health department.
They should. They already had that 'cause they've already.
I mean, really, in some of the conversation, when we met with the insurance agent, um, like even when the food trucks have been up here, they're supposed to have a permit from the health department, and we should be asking for it. But we don't have any kind of.
They've already had that, don't you think? I mean, they've cooked down there before. I don't know if the K F P has.
The Lions, Lions always did that.
Lions always did, but I thought, didn't the last time they did it, wasn't the K F P doing it? I thought they were. I mean, I, surely they wouldn't just buy chickens and go down there and cook them.
They were under the guidance of the Lions, though, not the town.
Well, yes, but, yes or no.
We weren't involved, but now we're involved.
Lions Club would have been involved if they were doing it under them, which I don't think the Lions Club would do that. If they were gonna cook them, they probably had to go get their own thing. But I, I mean, I don't know. We'd have, just have to ask.
I mean, I don't know if Lions had a permit from the health department. I have any idea.
They may never.
It didn't matter to us 'cause we didn't own the property, so we didn't care.
Yeah, I just, I don't really see where, I don't really see where a lease would be necessary. Only if liability was covered. Like, if I wanted to, if I wanted to load my grill up, I could, the park's open to the public.
Right.
I could take my grill down there and grill out and sit down there and eat if I want to. Then, I mean, they're gonna be doing the same thing. They're gonna have the grates, and without them grates, no one else can do anything with those.
No, that's true. Well, they're all.
So, I mean, as long as the liability was covered, I don't really see where a lease would be necessary, honestly. But I mean, I don't know. Amy may say different. Insurance company may say different.
Permit, if you're not leasing to them, you're not really on paper giving them, they're just using it. You're not giving them permission to use it. Therefore, that takes the town out of the responsibility of the health department. That would mean the responsibility would lay on them, not to throw them under the bus, but, you know.
We, we'll be giving implied permission because as of right now, they're gonna have to get a key from me to get their stuff.
Well, I think, yeah, and their grates locked up in the caboose?
Yes.
And then what's locked up in the other end?
Um, like the paper goods, that type of thing that they.
Well, I think Pat even said that they were willing to maybe replace that caboose, wasn't they? Didn't he say that?
I thought.
I think he did say something about that.
Some sort?
Yeah, they, they could, they surely need something a little better than that thing, but.
Yeah, it, Ben said it's not in good shape.
Yeah.
I guess that would all just depend on what the insurance company and lawyers say, but.
All right, let's find out what, what more Amy has to say about that and what we can and cannot do.
Okay, we, we talked about Melon already, so. Does anybody on our great big council here got any other thing they wanna discuss? No? Well, I make a motion that we, are we done signing?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at nine o'clock. I think it's right about, it's straight up, isn't it? I can't see it.
I'll second.
Oh, uh, hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The meeting is adjourned. So I read it's over. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.